So that I can all have the basis?
Yeah.
Why?
We started with, we started with.
They are.
What the other one?
I have no.
Yeah, and charge back, yeah.
Oh, I, I told him.
Nancy?
You like what I said?
Well, you're right. We're telling the judge nowhere.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Father Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as, as this representative, this town, dear Lord, and we thank you, dear Lord, for the beautiful place that you've given us to live in. Lord, I pray you'd guide us tonight in decisions we make, dear Lord, in everything that we do, and be the betterment for the community and the citizens, dear Lord. We love you today in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Welcome everyone to the March of 2022 Record Council Meeting. Time to hear comments from Red Vents, those three men from the county. Get to the road.
They just started last.
Probably any of our, before we start, there's partially been business on all that. Mr. State, they're going to go ahead and, and, and one of our county chair candidates.
Not one of the other, other candidate. That's what they call me anyway. Um, my name is Steve Doran. Uh, I'm third candidate for sure. Uh, I was the last guy to, uh, announce I was going around. Uh, just to give you a little bit about my background and history, I come from a town that's a lot smaller than this one. All we had was a grain elevator and nothing else. Um, grew up in the country, I came here after I finished my, or most of my professional career. I still work, um, because most of my mother's people are from Arkansas, and I always loved coming here as kids. Um, like I said, I pretty much finished up most of my professional career. Uh, I retired as the chief of police. I currently train police officers who are working on the border. Uh, we don't have the time and experience that I did, uh, because typically it's not their job to do the task with your performance type of government. And we all know that they're not doing what they're supposed to do. So it's up to the local sheriffs and jurisdictions to take care of that. Over thirty years as a police officer, twenty years of that as an administrator. Um, I've worked small jurisdictions and extremely large jurisdictions. Um, prior to going into, uh, working as a police officer, I was a highly decorated. Um, I served from nineteen seventy-nine until nineteen eighty-four. Uh, I've also worked with the legislature of several states around the country to pass rights to carry laws and constab. Um, I was appointed by mandate, was considered one of the best investigators in the country. Was appointed by congressional mandate to investigate all of the issues that were going on in Los Angeles National Lab, the espionage and theft. Uh, that was my first test by fire. I don't know if any of you, uh, Fox News, but I was. Uh, I went in, uh, according to record, I did more than six months and made them sixty years. For my trouble, I got fired, they tried to kill me, and, uh, I was harassed for about a year and a half. I put my kid in hiding, and, uh, it ended up, but I was completely exonerated from the things they accused me of doing. And I was put back in charge of the whole operations. But I not only was in charge of Los Alamos, all the law enforcement security and the police agencies for all the national laboratories in the country. Ended that for two and a half years. Um, I will admit to you, I was completely exhausted. I needed some time off. It's one of my contracts ended, I didn't put in, so I have it renewed. My second test was, I thought I was going to go back into the small time or small town, uh, law enforcement. Wanted to work for a city in, uh, northern Montana. During that time, the ATF came around and they were initiating a new program. They wanted to know who, uh, the, I'm going to back up here a little bit. What they wanted myself and the officers to do, I don't know if the program is current or not. I think it is, I think. But anytime we had contact with anybody who had a firearm, did the matter, came to your house on medical, you had a shotgun in the corner, they wanted us to call eight hundred number, provide them with all your information, what we saw, what kind of gun you had, who you are, all of your personal information, then your address, what room in the house, or if it was in your car. I, uh, impolitely refused, so, uh, they came after me. And they trumped up a bunch of charges, uh, if you read, so, by the way, any of these things I'm telling you, my life is literally an open book. I've had two books written about my career. I've had probably six or seven hour-long, uh, news programs about my career. Everything is on public record, from congressional record to, uh, federal court records. It's all there. I got nothing to hide. Um, anyway, uh, they trumped up a bunch of charges, uh, to discredit me because I wouldn't go along with the program. They said that if I would just back off and do what they wanted me to do, that everything would go away. And I would do it. So I ended up, um, I ended up, uh, going through the process, and at the end, not only did I win the case, but the jury stated that it was the biggest misrepresentation of justice they had ever seen. And it was clear the government was trying to get even with that guy. So, uh, I also have one issue I want to clear up because I'm dealing with a mayor in the council. Um, one of my counterparts says that I don't get along with local municipalities. I did have trouble with the mayor that I worked for. Um, again, he was, uh, with his authority. He, uh, he's in the newspaper. He, uh, wanted me, he's the county sheriff out of town. Um, he didn't want him using any of the businesses in town. And he didn't want the highway patrol to use the only grid we had in town, go in and go around town. And he wanted me to enforce his wishes, and of course I refused, so, uh, he didn't like that very much. What ended up happening was the city council took his authority to supervise me away because his request was so ridiculous, and, uh, I finished out my term under a police commission. Um, other than that, um, that's pretty much it for my background. I decided to run for sheriff, but several people asked me to run. But the reason that I decided to run is not because I have a problem with anybody who's currently here. In fact, I like, um, sheriff, you know, I think along there as well. Uh, but I think I have a lot of knowledge and experience that I can pass along to the next generation. None of us are getting any younger, and, uh, you know, none of us are promised tomorrow. So I think I have a lot that I have to offer to the department, to the officers, and to the county. Like I said, to pass on the knowledge and the experience that I have, because the next generation is going to take over now. So I appreciate your time, and I'll get out of your hair so you can get off with your business. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If a copy of the minutes, previous minutes, you're gonna have it. I hear motion accepted, previous, have motion.
There.
Have motion taken, all pairs down.
While y'all are looking at that, there's a few things I want to tell y'all about. Um, I've got to start working with, uh, Karen from Ballard. She's kind of taking, uh, twenty-twenty's records, and she's just going to pull one year at a time. When she gets to do those, she'll come back, swap them out, take the others. We've gone over how our office works since it's her first time. There was just kind of a lot we had to go over on the first day she was here, how our records are kept. She had no knowledge of any of it, so, uh, we did a lot of that, and we know we'll be working together through email quite a bit in the, in the coming weeks. Um, the next thing is regarding the census. We've been around and around and we've talked to this person and that person and different agencies. I finally have been in contact with a man named Shelby Johnson, and he's with GIS, which is, um, mapping. Um, he said they will be the agency that prepares the, 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 the resolution, whatever it is. Anyway, they're going to be the one that will prepare the packet, and they will make sure that everything is in there. Um, there'll be work that we'll have to do on our end, but they'll guide us through it so that what we send into them to get this taken care of is complete and accurate and done. And I talked to him a little bit, you know. I mean, like, I understand it's saying, but it doesn't tell you what to do. It doesn't tell you the steps. You need this, this, this. It just talks about how it, it, there's this great thing that you can file, and, you know, it starts then, it ends then. He said, if you've not been somebody who's working in a census cycle, chance of understanding what they want, what they're asking, why they're the ones that are heading it up. Um, they are going to start preparing ours, like, within the next little bit. It should take two to three weeks, and then we'll be able to submit it and hopefully get an answer. Uh, the deadline is, I believe, it's six months. I think they gave everybody six months. Um, and the last thing I want to talk to y'all about is, it's just odd. We don't really know what to make of it, but something that's been going on, so I want to tell y'all about it. Um, we have, you know, many utility bills, uh, gas, electric, water. We pay our, our water bills just like anybody else does. Um, all the utility bills that I've ever paid, when I got here, this is how Aaron taught me to do it. It's how Gary taught Aaron to do it. You sort everything out depending on what parks, uh, city hall, it's paid by general fund. Sewer plant, wells, that's paid by water fund. So I end up writing, say, three checks for each company, for each fund to cover all the different accounts that we have. Well, here while back, um, and enter, this is here because we've got to shut off on one of our. I'm like, well, that's not right. But we've been experiencing some problems with mail coming in, going, just quite a few problems, actually. But I pay so many bills out of that one check, I knew something wasn't right with it. So somehow our, more stuff on one account, they're, they're not crediting. Check. So I worked for a few days for a while with a representative from Entergy. We got everything lined out, we got everything to be, that's all good, that's all straight. She's going to try and get us, because we have twenty-one Entergy bills. So she's going to try and get us on this new program by where we're not billed that way, by just twenty-one individual bills, and they sort of group them by what they're for, so that maybe we can kind of narrow that down a little bit. In the meantime, because this is kind of costly, just to be honest, I'm cutting one check for every single bill. So that's twenty-one checks, that's twenty-one stamps, so that I can follow each check through each account. And there's no confusion about where they should be crediting what. Now, if that was the only one I'd had this trouble with, I probably wouldn't even have mentioned it to you. And then I opened my, my phone bills, and they've done the exact same thing to me. City Hall says we haven't paid anything. The fire department has credit. We've overpaid on the fire department. So now they're not crediting things right, and we, we don't, we truly don't understand what's going on because I've done bills this way for so many years, and it's hitting every one of our utilities that it's happening with. I don't know if, what's happening on the other end. But I'm cutting one check for every utility bill. I mean, just so y'all know, that does increase checks, that increased ink, that increased stamps. And it's kind of ridiculous, but.
Some of them are like one, two dollars. They're small.
The mail is the most undefendable thing right now that ever was.
I don't know.
It's a bill of records, it's horrible right now. You can't give it in direct, deposit it out right now. You, you don't get your thing the same day you get paid, the same day you get the mail box. You won't get it made online.
You know, the, you know, the stuff that I, that I give you in January, the financial interest statements? I know when those are due. I normally get a card in the mail that tells me, here's the web address, you know, go print it off.
Can you not pay online?
That came in. Um, I did, but no, not unless you have to because of the signature thing, because it requires two signatures. You can do that with some governmental accounts. We could pass some ordinances, maybe, that allow us to do certain things that way.
Because then you could just pay it online, and you would know.
It's not, it's not so bad with the other ones, but with that Entergy, with twenty-one different accounts. And I don't want to jump in and change anything yet while that representative is still working with me and trying to get me on this new program that they've got going, because she's got a plan in place to, you know, fix that. What?
The new plan.
Well, I mean, we went over it, and she can see, you know, what they did, but, but I'll tell you something else that, uh, in the midst of all this that we learned that helped me understand better than anything, Entergy's customer service, it's not Entergy's customer service, it's call center that has, I don't know, a bunch of companies that call them their customer.
It sounds like the billing is also.
They don't care. I mean, they don't, they're not even Entergy employees, you know.
There's nothing in common with what Entergy involved.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Unless they're sharing a billing agency.
It's very weird.
So that would be, and that, that's why Walmart doesn't do that.
Yeah.
That could be the commonality besides you.
We've had people come in that's trying to get a new service for Entergy. Energy served our technical service, and we've got a list of numbers, and they begin to list the numbers. They contacted one of the regional, records, and you got that. They said that's the only way they could get through to anybody, was to call the label, their call center, everything. We had trouble checking that back in.
That's true.
How do you run all those checks? It's costly, but there we go.
That's just my suggestion, though. Exactly, you could go and individually pay them online.
If we have, with cities, with stuff like that, if there's a lot of users that are going to do it, you get it where you can, and I'm not saying I won't do that, it's a little bit because.
Yeah, because your account information is on board, you're able to pay that way. And then you would know if you do confirmation that that account is paid. Instead of sending in twenty, I mean, you're sending in twenty-one checks, twenty-one barrels, and they're looking at it as like, uh, did I?
Well, no, what I do is, there's, there's actually, there's ten in general, ten in water and sewer, one in streets. So they get ten stubs and one check in an envelope. I, I mean.
Yeah.
And I'll even go further, on each of those stubs, the amount I paid is circled.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just don't understand why it's all of a sudden a problem. Literally paid this way for twelve years. It was paid that way before.
It's going to get worse.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I promise you it's going to be. They want everyone to go to electronic.
Is it illegal for us to do, uh, overdraft these counts?
It's, to just do it that way, yes, because it, everything requires two signatures.
With two signatures authorized, yeah, or that looks like.
Well, that's why, I, I don't know exactly how it is. I know I've asked about it before, and they told me it was okay to do with stuff that's like, uh, payroll tax, retirement, stuff that's related, basically governmental, but not just pay stuff online. So, and, and I'm not saying there's not a way, we can't work to that point. There might, there probably is, but it hasn't got to that yet for us ever before.
Is this two signatures going to be a problem?
No, it's not a great signature. It's just, what I'm saying is I can't just sign up to have electronic draft because our payments require both our signatures on checks. It's a checks and balance thing, you know, with accounting. So if it comes to that, I'll look into it, and we'll have to go through whatever process that would be. But.
Maybe that'll be as fun as this.
No, I mean, that could, yeah, that can be coming. And I get it, it's easier.
You might as well figure out a way to do it, because I guarantee you, that's coming in the future.
Well, and it's cheaper, it's cheaper for us that way. We're not having checks, rent, mail, you know, we're not having all those expenses, so.
And I didn't give them the number.
But they're picky about it.
To want to, Entergy's top obvious, and I've called him three or four times, and it goes straight to full mail. I'm going to call him again this week, if I don't get an answer, I'm going to call the person back, give him his number, tell him to call, to call me, and go and answer his phone. Everybody good?
That's what I had.
The mayor of course, uh, bad player. Folks asked me about if we have an designated storm shelter in town, and right now we do not. At one time the old gym was, and I think apparently after, with you, after it was, it quit being designated, there never was another one staffed. The upper elementary, the old high school, basement down there, that could be an option. I haven't talked to Jerry about it yet, but, but all of our deputies, I, I, I did that, that's because they do have keys to get all the way through the building, so that could be an option. Uh, and the old gym, I guess it could be an option again, but, uh, the old Methodist church possibly be an option because it's, it's, but it's traditionally owned. And we talked one time about, I don't know too much about this room being a shelter, but a place to. There's something did happen, a disaster did happen. Put them in here, you know, we had to, but do that, we need to get a backup generator for this building. I don't know what are y'all's thoughts on this? About a community storm shelter.
It's just required, the city do that.
Fireman, it's been talked about, the council meeting before, we just talked, we never did anything. I think Jeff didn't really throw it in. I think Steve Marcy brought it.
Yeah, I think we did. I, I don't. I don't know, I, I'd like to check with Jerry and see if that. And that and the other, because here's the thing, you know, most people are sitting right there in their living room until it's too late. And, and I'm, I'm guilty as anybody, you know, the one that hit our house and tore the roof and everything off. I was trying to go down the road, trees falling and stuff, and that ain't going to be, you know, you, you got to go to the storm shelter before the storm gets here. Now, that's the reason. I'm not sure how safe this old gym would be anyway.
I ain't eating in that.
That's all right. I don't know what that would be in that.
Well, I think when it was before, it was down in the dressing room, and it's probably not even, we could do that anymore.
You're not going to get many people in these dress rooms, Jerry.
And I don't know if there, like, there would be a live gym, gym, school, I don't know. Probably wouldn't have checked, you know, so. I'm not sure if they're interested. That's why I'm, you know, I'm talking about, so I don't know.
Well, the problems that I've seen before I quit working, when we go to town and ask the energy, something they have, all this people staying in, and the kids going in there and vandalizing it, and it looks like hanged, you know what? Uh, it looks like tied over, to be honest with you, I would have gone in if I had to.
I had people ask about it, so I just, that's why I brought it to you. Because I knew we talked about it in the past, and it's, it's, it's. As far as the backup generator, we did need to get one for this building, this is a problem.
Yeah.
But I don't know if we need one for that reason. We didn't need a backup generator. Matter of fact, I think the gym was only asking me if we had generators for the, for the ice storm, you know, it's, it's threatening. Ice storm, we have one at well one, we have one at well six, we do not have one at well five on red lane. We do not have one for the left station. We do not. I think I can, to cover everything, we need to pick up, we need four more generators. Looking at the shift of Jenny Grant's available for, stuff like that. We have one, we have one sewer plant, we have one at that station. We don't have it on for the left station for well five.
You need six.
Need six.
I need one.
Yeah, they, there's both of them, yeah. Uh, that's something else. You know, they brought one to fire station, and it's single page, we need three pages as well. We made him wait and get, and, well, I went to the fire meeting and they asked me about it. So I called them a day or two later, and, and the guy that services our generators said he couldn't get three page generators, he couldn't get them, so. Find someone that could get them, and they could install it, but they, they just can't get them, so. We have to meet one for the fire station.
The OEM director of Stone County, Dave Wilson, Willie Wilson, Lee, has offered to come immediately send records to your generators and service. Uh, he services Stone County, all of Stone County, uh, over there. Thank you, sir, generator. Uh, he serves as Stone County, all of Stone County, uh, over there, I think he's a generator. Also, he is offering, you know, he won't be contacting, asking Tom Will to shut down with us.
We were, on that note, we were checking generators, overhand, make sure they're ready, one at well one, we didn't register on the district, so, we got to looking, and they haven't, they haven't done any maintenance on since twenty twenty. So, there might be something to look into, switch, cause I think they're pretty, they got the D M L stores around, I think they're, stepped off M two D, and they can't really keep up the bulk of things, and they got, they lost that store in Melbourne, and they got a new store, so, I think the sun's trying to keep up with the electrical business, and they're not, they're not finished, they're not able to keep up like they do. That's all I have, the mayor's report, sheriff's report.
Before leaving the mayor's report, I got, I want to say that, I'm not sure what I'm doing, but anyway, the Calico Rock senior boys, as you know, finished up the state tournament, the regional tournament, and received money from Calico Rock for meals, or whatever you want to be used for, and there are a lot of people talking about it, so, that's good, good, and, trust me, that, these young men represented us on the base of all four very well. But they represent us extremely well off the basketball court, I think, I think the last time the senior boys team got to spend the night at the state tournament, it was Charlie Wilson, senior year, and you know what happened, notice, over there, very west side.
I thought you said the boys were beating the best canary team.
That's the one with the devil horns on it.
But anyway, I think the kids appreciate, the people appreciate, and I was gonna say, for them, thank you. Uh, ninety-five calls per system, that's what I know. Had four drug arrests, and I might point out something, yes, and, and some of the things, I don't, but these, these drug arrests can be, something that's pretty in the city limits, is what I'm talking about, and, you know, I, I, for, for our purposes, we don't differentiate between the city limits and outside, because they're coming and going all the time, you know what I'm saying? Uh, so, but, I, I would end this to just the city limits, because that's what it is, but they're all born, the big people that's coming in and out of here on a regular basis, because we've been, especially at Blade here, in the last year or so, we've been, really proactive, and, and, and make some support for this, for example, today, you got about four of them hooked up today, that, you know, those three, and those had Calico Rock connections to some of them. Anyway, four drug arrests in city, that's forty did they have, that's ten in the city, and ten other arrests was most of them, maybe, some sort of a domestic type, and, some questions. Good job.
Good job. Checkin' them boys out working too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, uh, they, uh, we've got two people that are actually in the county, that we got out of our grant, we assigned those people to their task force, they're, they're working with the drug task force, for the drug task force, even though they're, they're our people. So, we've been able to, to take advantage of some of that, and it's for getting a lot of task force head up in the county, which is, which is up for you a lot. I like, yeah, pretty good.
So, one more thing, mayor's report, the old building, they found, we get all, we get all the information, Robert, he's gonna look into that, see what our next steps is, get it on that. I was telling him, she called me three weeks ago, and she's been paying the taxes, and this is Lorraine, she lives northwest of ours all the, the sister to Fred, or whatever he goes by, but anyway, that she's been paying the taxes on it, and they said that she was delinquent, that, somehow or another, taxes going the wrong place, so, she was gonna call that morning and get it straightened out. Anyway, she's, she's, she's kinda hard to deal with, but, I, I will be giving her a call in the near future too, so, but, about this, it's in her name. Keep on, we have to deal with it, so, Robert's gonna look into it.
Deal with her.
Deal with, yeah.
What about the old service team, is she on that?
No, and Jack's hadn't talked about that.
Did you do any different than that?
No, that's, this is, no, that's it.
Did I talk to the Mountain Dew mayor about it as well?
Yeah, I talked to the Mountain Dew mayor about the same problem they got over there. He actually talked to the person that owned that property down there, it's not him, it's the person that's in there right now, so. Give us things. Water and sewer, week before last, we had a big, big, uh, break out of Wyoming, it was in a road board, under the road out in the middle of nowhere. They bored under it, sleeved it, come apart inside that sleeve, so they spent two, fixing that, got that back, get it. See, track over down here, and those ditches, there's, there's a leak in this area, and we narrowed it down to this, there's a two inch, an old two inch pipe, running from this creek to Garden Street, and, uh, there's an old three inch pipe in there too, we found both of them, and we're, we're tracing two back to the street over here, and the closer we get to the street, the louder you can hear the water. You know there's a leak there, we just hadn't made it to it yet, it's in the pavement, and we think there might be two or three of them. And we think there's a possibility, if we find the other end of the old three inch, maybe we can cap it off and do a wave of it. And, whenever they get chance, they're down there digging, and they've been using that, and they're listening to us, down here is what it is. Slowly but sure. Parks. Yeah, Cory goes, they have class tomorrow, two Thursdays, and this will be his last class, he has to have, we can be certified and be our, our assistant president, so, hopefully by the middle of April, we can, we can touch the other one most, if we have to pay, as our officer records, so. Hopefully by then, by the middle of April, we can do that. Under parks, uh, I don't know if you've noticed Grand Park, Adam, but, fixed Grand Park, you know, whenever it took the ridge out, Danny Fish told us, then, get it two, three years to heal, well, I found out three or four weeks ago, that they had a project that they're fixing to do, pitch, pitch the creek for us, so, I only hadn't had our side fixed, and I called him to see if he wanted us to do anything to the creek banks, always doing that, and he said, no, they, they were gonna do all that. Only thing they asked me to have, this contractor does, was think that, and pull that, the creek ground out right below where the ridge was, so it would start flowing back like it was, instead of down both sides and cutting the bank, they did that while we were down there fixing it, so. They put the four inch rock around the, the pavilion, 'cause it was, just a matter of time, we didn't do something with it, it was gonna, it was gonna lose dead, but it down, it was down in the hole. They got it fixed, they got everything looked at, checked out, and that part seeded, so, but, Danny Fish told me they should be here by, you know, later in early summer, so. I don't know exactly what they're gonna do, but, but, I'm, I'm talking to them to get here and see if they can, they talked about drop steps, proches and downs, every, just every so often, on both sides of the creek, I'm gonna see if they can, up at, right on the creek, which is right behind the fish actor at Northport, they took, big three inch rocks, placed them in the creek, where you can use them to step across the creek, I'm gonna see if they can do that down there, both ends, but, build a bridge, and water, flood, and bring trees through, and mop them out, so, we'll see if we can do this, and see if we can, and it'll look more natural, that's what I'm gonna say. They'll do something like that while they're here. Team park, uh, hadn't had inmates since December, they, they came today, I haven't all week, so I got them up there, working on the ball field, getting it, getting it ready. Ball, ball field's already started, but I haven't had them, so, we got them up there, and they cut all the grass back today, and, uh, built a field, they have to get a new, another load of field conditioners, they're gonna put it on tomorrow, and we're gonna try to use our soft hopper to spread it, maybe it'll spread it more evenly and thinner, and then we're gonna roll it and drag it again. I finally got a bid for the life project, so, we'll try to have a park meeting, do it this week, or next week, so we just get, finally get project going. Fire department.
As of January eighteenth, the present date, we've had a total of fourteen calls. Eight of those calls have been medical calls, which, uh, I'm glad to see that they're down on this side of county, I know the other side of county, they're just, uh, running day and night over there, but they're, they're down over here, so, uh, as far as the fire department and the calls, we're receiving for that. We've had six fire calls, uh, the latest one was right here on East First Street, last week, wanna talk about that just a little bit. This was actually the first call, uh, that the department has had since the first year, in reference to a structure type fire. The department did an excellent job, being first time, uh, I was really, I had a good turnout, they did a good turnout on that, they did a good job, and we, uh, of course, after it was over, we, we, we went through the debriefing, and the dues and don'ts, things we should have done, things we shouldn't have done, but, uh, we, uh, we worked things out, and we will be improving as, as time goes on, uh, with that. It was, uh, kind of hard to fight, the wind's out of the north, uh, we couldn't get, the only place we could position our trucks was on the north side, so, uh, we were dealing with the, with the smoke and all that stuff at the same time, along with the blizzard, that was falling. So, what it all really boiled down to, uh, was the traco, and, and, Ray sent a traco up there to us, was able to take out the, the east wall, we couldn't, we couldn't do nothing with it, it was metal, absolutely couldn't do nothing with it. Uh, couldn't get in and fight it, couldn't bend it, uh, it was a real problem, he sent the traco up, uh, and we got a wall out, and the fire went out, we could put it out, uh, and go home, otherwise we'd been there all night with it, uh, so, we did get that, that done, so, uh, I'm excited about that, excited about my personnel, they are stepping up, they are, they are coming along, so, we got a long way to, but, but they did a good job. Our riverboats are, are back in service, both the, uh, the metal boat and, and fiberglass boat. We did get the fiberglass boat back, uh, week before last, it's set up, it has a twenty-four jet prop on it, uh, and so we're gonna be able to operate, in low water, uh, along with our regular boat, which we got fixed also, which we'll be able to operate in high water. We are, uh, I am, and the rest of us are, we're, we're anticipating a, a large influx of people on this river, this spring and this summer, uh, coming down. So, we're, we're trying to, to prepare for that and be prepared for that, I've even thought about, you know, on real active days, holidays and stuff like that, having a patrol out there, you know, with our boats available to, to respond to something. Anyway, April the sixteenth, uh, we've been invited to the Northport Fire Department for a swift water class, high water rescue, that's on April the sixteenth, and then May the fourteenth, we will do the practical, uh, we'll go to Bull Shoals, uh, not Bull Shoals.
Not Bull City.
Not Bull City, there for the practical, and I have, uh, eight people that are interested in that, I do have, uh, well, I do have three certified swift water people on the department, one of them's Gabe, and one of them's May, and one of them's Sheriff, uh, so, you can read between the lines there, uh, we were training several years ago, uh, but, we'll do a practical May the fourteenth, and I've got people coming. We'll take our boats and our equipment, and, and we will, uh, and we'll work on the river there, so, excited, kinda excited about that, that's really, those are really good classes to take, people like those classes, they get in the water, they get to swim, and they get to do all sorts of stuff, it's, it's an interesting class to be in. Also, uh, in conjunction with the Pineville Fire Department, Eric and I are talking about, uh, in-house training, uh, together, and, and doing things this year, so, we can get our in-house training and, uh, our, our hours that we need to have, without having to travel too far. Uh, so, we're, we're looking at that and trying to get some plans set up there for, uh, training here in Pineville and Calico, so. February the twenty-second, uh, of February, we, uh, the department attended a Narcan class over at the Ozark College, that's for drug overdose, uh, the Narcan, the brain, uh, knowledge, there, for those who are overdosed, and so, had eight people attending that, so we, we've got training, uh, there. And each one that was there was given a kit, so, I was there, well, they, all, all the kids went to the department, so we've got, uh, I got one on our truck, uh, there. Also, our, our tanker, pumper truck is down, uh, the one that we just got back with a pump on the back, uh, it's having starter problems. I've been in contact with the Baker Repair at Mountain Home, they're gonna be coming out to, to check the truck out and, and, if I get the starter fixed for us, I haven't heard from him. He said they were small, uh, but that he would be, uh, would be calling, also, the pump on the back, I don't know what's happened to that, uh, that we couldn't get it started, so, it'll be, I'll get him to look at that also. Again, I hope he calls pretty soon. Tornado, did you hear him? Okay, uh, I'm very well, he's in baseball, uh, he does our, uh, radios and stuff, but he was here about three weeks ago, on Saturday to look at him, and I was out of pocket, uh, and wasn't able, able to meet with him, so we rescheduled that, he's gonna be calling again. But, uh, we have to set him off manually, I believe the one up at Sentinel goes off automatically from dispatch from the S school. Uh, but the other, the other three, we have to do manually, I've got people assigned to them up here. Mitch, did you hear this one up here tonight?
A little late, but I heard it.
A little late, see, it didn't go off, the thing was on, and I thought it was working, but I wasn't for sure now, I know it wasn't, but I've got people assigned to get to them. Uh, we can operate them manually, that's what we'll do in the in- We can operate them manually, that's what we'll do in the event, you know, if we need to use them again. Hopefully we won't, anyway, we've got it covered.
But Barry's gonna check and see what it'll take to get them automated.
Automated, yeah. Also, one last thing that I do want to mention, and I believe that this is really helping the, the department our incentive pay. To this date, we're up to six hundred and eighty dollars paid out, which we will pay out to each firefighter at the end of November. So this has really helped, it's really building some incentive. Everybody's getting interested, everybody's getting excited, you know, about responding to calls and stuff. Because it, it gives them something to work for. And so I, I think this is really helping with, with our response. Also, gonna be looking at hands-on training through the year in our department on different things. We're gonna be training again with trucks and posters and ladders and even on the river. We're gonna be training doing some things there. So we, we've got an active year coming up. Everybody's getting excited about things. We have, what's his name, Link, from EBS, will be coming tomorrow night. I have two firefighters, I've got one new firefighter that's come on, Will Hooty.
No, Hood.
Hood?
No.
Why don't you want to call him Hood?
I don't know.
Will Hood has come on and we're gonna be getting him with Burnhouse. Yeah, so he gonna be coming up. He is, he was out on one of the calls the other day and Stacey had me talk to you. He sprung his knee, I don't know, on that first call. David went on, so he doesn't, I'll talk to you about it here, I don't know about how that's gonna work. You know, I told him to write me an incident report, he didn't. Let's see, that's pretty well, that's right now.
Have you heard anything back about that ISO meeting?
We were talking about that today, we're gonna give him a call, no, we haven't. And I think next time that we do call him, we're gonna call him in a few days, we're gonna request a review. We should have had the report by the first of the year. The last time that he called, we'd have it received last year before. So we're gonna be calling again and just, and request a review. And see if we can get a review on our meeting. See if he'll come down, sit down with us, that's gonna take a while to do.
And it's my understanding, the review, they send a packet that's to be gone over by the water department as well as several other areas. And it's quite lengthy, but there's a difference in just getting a ISO report from like our, the testing on the water hydrants last year and requesting a review. That's two different things. So I think we have to request for a review to see if we can lower the ISO even more.
Also, I want to throw this out here, Sharon's been working hard on the dues that are coming in and going through the list. We have people that, that are getting built, should be built, and those that should be built. So she's been working pretty hard on that and, and trying to get that, that built out for us. We do have people responding, saying the dues, we have lucky people that are not. But regardless, next year, we're gonna be able to have a more, a hope, a more compact list of, of our district. It, it's kind of hard to really find it, we've got maps, but some people are right on the other side of that district and some people are in, some people on the other side. But she has been working effortlessly at that, to get that worked out.
As well as the girls in Buckle City Hall.
Yeah, the girls in Buckle, yeah. And Cam, the dog. Anything else?
Each one of you have one of these packets. This is our annual report from, from proud of it, from what we've been able to do and what we hope to do for the future. So each one of you has this and if there's any questions in this, I would be glad to answer any of those. We just got them back out and running. We opened up at the museum itself, it was open in February, but it was a lot of business, a lot of things going on there. People didn't really come out and visit us. But Marcus showed a little bit different and we're kind of pleased about what's happening there. We have our dedication coming up on April, the eighth month, April ninth, I don't even know anymore, just know it'll be there. And we hope to have everything finished. We may not be welling on some of it, but we'll have it all done and finished. And it's really exciting, it's a total of fourteen thousand square feet, which has got everything in it. We appreciate the donation from the, from the police department that have given us their exhibit from there, which are moving over. And we have everything, our science department is being worked on right now. Paul Suds is working with me with that, so we're working to take that up, running. We're all kind of excited about everything that's happening, it's just a little crazy. We've got some calendar of events, as you well know, we've got the Lions Club, we got the dedication ring on the Lions Club rodeo, which we're also gonna be doing that same weekend, a reenactment kind of thing in the museum. We're having people in costume sitting in different locations and we'll tell you the history of that. So we're gonna have that that weekend too. So I have some questions about fireworks, but I know that, if we're gonna be doing any events, what? We're gonna do that, when do we do it, when is fireworks coming? I don't have any, anybody has any answers on that one yet. We have Native American Weekend, which will be done in September. One something new that we're doing on Main Street within Main Street actually, is that on the third Friday night of each month, starting in April, they will, we're gonna remain open till six or till seven. And there will be events going on, hopefully vendors on the street, music on the street, trying to do something, trying to get people to come into town and go from there. So we're gonna do that on the third, Thursday, third Friday of every month. The first Friday, first Saturday of every month is going to be demonstrations going on with vendors that we have showing them what's going on. We have plans for different, and quarterly, I'm gonna be doing different things for the museum and visitor center, i.e. reenactment type things, trying to bring the history back and trying to do that kind of thing. Charlie and Jensen helping me get that rolling. And so we're gonna be doing some ghost town chores, we're gonna try and do some different things. So we're working on, probably agree for that. I don't know if they have contacted you yet, but there's, the guys out in North, in North Fork, they're gonna do a bike ride, they want you to start here and go up through and end up on Pushman and come back around. I know that's an involvement, I got involved with that last year. At the last minute, they decided to do a baby testing. So my understanding is that they're gonna do another baby testing now and then in the fall, we're gonna be doing something which will be a pretty big, what I would say is gonna be a pretty big type thing. So and if they do, we're gonna have to coordinate roads, streets and everything else that, so, and bikers. I mean, they're mountain bikers, so they're really gonna go in there and push and pull them. We're trying to do as much as we can to bring people into the area, so we're pretty proud of what we've done. We're gonna continue to do it, we've got a lot more going on on the internet, trying to do Facebook, trying to do some others. In May, May and June, we have something going out in Southern Living. Advertisements going out in Southern Living, so that they, about us without us advertising, although I had promised I would sometime, that's okay. So we're gonna be doing something in May, so. Do y'all have any questions for me? No? Nope, nope. Can you get out of here? Thank you.
How's your knee?
My knee is working.
Another thing about that street, it happened, having two growing pains on Southern Rock Street. Iron Lake Street, Marquise Street, we had to cut the pavement, put some new water line there, new church. They put two new driveways in and they're putting that covert drainage carrier off. So we, the next week, we had to cut it again and put another cover in. And then I was asked by one of the businesses up there, what could we do about getting the street widened? I said, well, that's what happened when we put commercial property, street on it. That's, that's the only thing that matters. We measured the street there, it's only like seventeen feet and it probably should be twenty. I don't really really get invited to fix that right now, so we just have to do it. That's on history. And then I talked to the highway department today, I was asking about trying to get the approach widened. Coming up Highway sixty-six in College, I was wondering if they were able to deal with me. And I got to the end of the day, he told me what highway department would do to fix it, we measured it out and make it forty feet wide, which is not right now, it's gonna help get some of that out there. He told me what we need to do, dig a drainage ditch, so I had that done today. There's supposed to be over here sometime this week to fix that, so we'll, we'll see. Growing pain, we've cut a couple of streets. Unfinished business. New business, have this resolution. Authorizing city to enter, enter an agreement with Risk Engineering and can't claim in progress. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero four. Resolution, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk, Calcal Rock, Arkansas engineering agreement with Risk Engineering Incorporated out of Blue Rock, Arkansas. Whereas Calcal Rock, Arkansas has received American Plan Rescue Act funding for various projects in the city. And whereas the city has followed the state procurement procedures for selection of engineer and whereas it will be necessary for the mayor and or city clerk to act in connection with the engineering agreement. Now therefore, it is resolved that the city council, Calcal Rock, Arkansas hereby declares that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with Risk Engineering Incorporated in Blue Rock, Arkansas for projects listed above. Such costs and contract format to be approved by the city, the Calcal Rock City Council and all such costs to be paid from city funds. Give you up to date on that project, we had to get, we're having to get new easements since we're having to move the five. We have one signed, took Paul with me, we went to the gentleman's house, he elderly, doesn't get it around well, so I was, took her with me because it had to be motorized, so we went and got one done. Three more, there's two more property owners with three more signatures, one property owner has to sign for two different pieces of property. That piece, we hadn't heard back from them, they live in Old West Arkansas, we hadn't heard back from them yet. And the other one is Miss Billy Plinkinbeard on the other side of the creek. And her son has the document, he's looking over it and he didn't draw it back, he signed it. That's what we're waiting on on that one. We have to do this resolution to get.
It's because this is, because this money is that ARP money, there's just different hoops you gotta get through because it's embedded, so this is what Carrie sent us and said this is our next step forward.
Make the motion to pass the resolution, I give twenty-two, 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 okay?
Motion. Have a motion in the city. Any further discussion?
I just want to go on record to say that we're not building the tower, we're just preparing it. I don't understand why you're telling our government that.
So, go home, Jackie?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Mitch?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I did, I, on this census thing, I had to call the, one of the lobbyists, the governor's lobbyist, he took me in touch with our new senator, Scott, my footballer, and he's the one that got the ball rolling to get us to the right person on this census. And I've been to two great meets, you know, I went last month and I was told over there that don't be afraid, lean on these senators for whatever we need, that's what they're hired for. Anytime I can talk to them, I put a bug in their ear about needing some funding for water and sewer infrastructure. I lived, and they were in legislation, it finished up last week, so anytime I can put a bug in their ear about some kind of aid for that, I, if y'all get a chance, like, like I said, I figured out that's, that's the one reason why I never can get stuff, because they, they got a project going, they told one of those reps over there, they were gonna be leaning hard on us, we said, okay. That, that's what, just gonna start getting this heart, leaning hard on for some of these things. We're gonna have to have some kind of funding, we'll be able to get a water sewer back up here. That's all I've had, I have everything else.
Dean, there's nothing to do here tonight, just something to think about. I remember our very first meeting, when I come over here and Harry said something that night. Our first meeting said about cleaning some things up, and you said, let me get some things cleaned up in our city, our own property stuff first, and that. And I was just talking a little bit that night about down here at this station, it's kind of like, oh, listen. And I don't know, and I, I don't like going to get involved with people's property and stuff, business, or anybody else. I don't know if it's the mortgage, or you get some some things, somebody who's got one that's new, where you can, you could put the thing to work and do it. You know, something for us to look into, say, for one we could do. You go up Commerce Street, where Greg just looked at that garden on the left, you know, left that, you know, things like that. It's, this need will be fixed in that place down there, no more than that. And a couple, three of them's already been fixed up since we have two, this for sure looks better in town, but few things that...
This was better, but it's a long way from being finished.
Look, well, you talking about here?
Yeah, they, they took some of it out that night.
But anyway, there's, and I know there are probably some people in town that give us some more, but anyway. Just made it some way looking, did your luck before and it says you're working.
We need to be able to fly apparently too, we're all building, I mean, there's several burned out buildings. We can't do it one month for the next ten years, I mean, we need to be able to do it.
The ordinance we have now, it's a long drawn out process. And Robert was talking about this a little bit, said it's easier if you can get, top of that person, get them to cooperate than we have to go to. Well, we have to go to. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
We need something to work, we need that. We need some advice on how to do that.
Do I have anything else?
Who is it?
For most gracious, having to follow once again, we have to come to forty, Lord, just thank you for everything you do for us. Thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, Christ, he paid for all this. Lord, continue to watch over and wrap your love and your tender mercies around our community, our county, and the officials and the ones that go out and put their lives on the land each and every day. Lord, just a special thanks for them raising us. Lord, watch over our children, our... Lord, watch over our children, our country, and Lord, you know, the world wasn't shaped it to, we just ask you, your will and let you drop in that. Well, go with us, bring us back all safely to this place again, for these things, for this Christ most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
So, I just wanted to make sure, excuse me. Uh, the, uh, yeah.